Not present yet. Suzanne Spellin.
Here.
Sarah Wanger.
Here.
And Deirdre Rudolph here. So we do have four members present. So we do have a forum. Also with us tonight, Erin Vera, who I believe will be is on the video, obviously, but is having issues with his audio, but we'll rectify that in the next minute. We have our legal counsel, Andy Brick. So I will start with the first items on our agenda. We have three items on our consent agenda. First item is PLPC 2020 0031, which is 101 to 119 Country Gardens Apartments.
Shana.
Site plan review and seeker determination proposing to 21 new low-rise structures containing 144 new dwelling units. The second agenda item is PLPC 2021 0008 32 to 34 River Street subdivision review. This is 32 to 34 River Street LLC proposing to subdivide an existing lot into two parcels. And our third item on our consent agenda is PLPC 2021 0007. This is 2304 15th Street site plan review and seeker determination. Amonti Pizza is proposing the construction of a 600 square foot addition and off-street loading area. So I would ask, Erin, can you hear us? Are you on the audio at this point?
I can, can you hear me?
Yes.
Then yes, I am.
Okay, terrific. All right, so. I guess, I guess we're looking, these are all three on the consent agenda. So looking for a motion.
Well, are we first looking for to determine if anybody wants any of these to go off the consent agenda?
Yes. Yeah, I get, yes, would you like to have any of these items removed from the consent agenda?
Yeah, and the question is whether we do as commissioners or whether anybody in the public wants, wants it.
Yes.
This is Elizabeth Rodriguez, 1986 15th Street. I'd like to see 23 through 2304 15th Street on the full agenda, not the consent agenda. That's PLPC 2021 0007.
Okay. Okay, so that will be moved to new business on the regular agenda.
And DeeDee, it's Andy Brick. I had a question for Roger Keating, a minor procedural thing I think he could clean up. I'm not asking for it to be removed from the agenda, but if he's available, I would like him to address a question I have about the seeker form.
Okay.
I'm on, Andy.
Okay, thank you.
I'm on. You guys have me?
Yes, we do.
Okay, great.
Hi, Roger, I know you submitted a revised EAF in relation to question 12. And you initial the change and changed it from what the resource mapper provided to you. I also wanted to confirm that your initial change applied to 12B as well as 12A. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, then based upon that, board members, you can treat that one as an unlisted action. And I would just remind you to please do seeker for all of the items on the consent agenda before acting upon them. Thank you, Roger.
Okay, thank you, Andy. So is there a motion? Let's look at the first one, PLPC. Well, we'll do them separately. Is that correct, Andy? We'll do two separate seeker actions for both. Okay. So PLPC 2020 0031, looking for a motion with respect to a seeker determination.
And before we do that, is do we know that if there's anyone that wants this to be put on the full, the full agenda? Anybody from the public? I don't know that we do, but we actually asked.
Okay, I will ask, is there anybody from the public that would like PLPC 2021 0031 removed from the consent agenda and move to old business?
Good.
All right, not hearing anybody. I will ask, is there a motion with respect to seeker determination?
I moved approval of the seeker as an unlisted action.
Okay, and I'm looking for approval of a negative declaration.
And that that would be a negative declaration.
Okay, thank you. So Barbara Higbee made the motion. Is there a second?
This is Sarah, I'll second.
Thank you. Going to our vote, Barbara Higbee.
Yes.
Suzanne Spellin.
Yes.
Sarah Wanger.
Yes.
I'm just, is Anthony here yet? I assume he.
Yes.
Okay, Anthony, yes. Is that your vote? Yes.
That's my verdict, yes.
Thank you. And Deirdre Rudolph, yes. So motion passes 5-0. Now looking for a motion with respect to site plan approval.
This is Sarah. I'll make a motion that we approve the site plan.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
I will second that.
Thank you. Here we go. Barbara Higbee.
Yes.
Suzanne Spellin.
Yes.
Sarah Wanger.
Yes.
Anthony Moeen.
Yes.
And Deirdre Rudolph, yes. Motion passes 5-0.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Moving on to our second consent agenda item, PLPC 2021 0008 3234 River Street. I will ask the applicant or anyone in the public if they would like to keep this, if they would like to move this item from the consent agenda. Not hearing anyone. So I would ask, this is a seeker determination unlisted action, so I'd look for a motion with respect to seeker determination.
This is Sarah. I'll make a motion that the planning commission serves lead agency and declare this as an unlisted action.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
I second.
All right, going to vote, Barbara Higbee. Barbara Higbee.
Yes.
Okay, Anthony Moeen.
Yes.
Suzanne Spellin.
Yes.
Sarah Wanger.
Yes.
And Deirdre Rudolph, yes. Proceeding, we're now looking for a motion with respect to our seeker determination.
I think we did that incorporate.
Everybody, sorry, but by your motion, you declared lead and declared an unlisted action. What DeeDee is requesting now is a motion to issue the negative declaration.
Thank you. I'll make a motion that we declare this negative declaration.
Okay, terrific. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, thank you. Going to our vote, Barbara Higbee.
Yes.
Sarah Wanger.
Yes.
Suzanne Spellin.
Yes.
Anthony Moeen.
Yes.
And Deirdre Rudolph, yes. Motion passes 5-0. All right, now for the last but not least, the approval of the subdivision. So is there a motion with respect to the approval of the subdivision?
This is Sarah. I make a motion that we approve the proposed subdivision.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Suzanne seconds. Going to our vote, Barbara Higbee.
Yes.
Sarah Wanger.
Yes.
Anthony Moeen.
Yes.
Suzanne Spellin.
Yes.
And Deirdre Rudolph, yes. Motion passes 5-0. All right, we are now moving on to the old business portion of our agenda. The first case is PLPC 2021 0003. Location is 576 Fifth Avenue. Site plan review and seeker determination unlisted action. WPNT Construction LLC is proposing to convert a vacant three-story masonry building, a former school, into 21 residential units. I would ask, is the applicant for this project or representative of this project here with us tonight?
Yes, the applicant is here, I believe, and this is Lisa Rodriguez from TAP. I'm his architect and helped prepare the site plan.
Great. Thank you. The floor is yours.
Okay, so we were here for conceptual review a couple of months ago. And it seemed like you all generally look favorably on the project. The project is to take the former Lancingburg High School and convert it into a multifamily dwelling. It would contain 21 units, essentially one unit per classroom. The project would use historic tax credits, which also generally has you break up or not change the essence of a classroom so that you'd be able to read a classroom when you went in the building. So that's kind of the guiding principle for what is a unit is a classroom. So the plan is to divide it up into seven studio slash loft apartments. So some store, some stories are tall enough to allow for a loft level to be installed, but there would be a studio apartment. There would be eight one-bedroom apartments and six two-bedroom apartments. Very little changes need to happen to the exterior of the property. We would like to save the north lawn as amenity space for the tenants and proposing to put out a picnic table, a pergola, and some benches, some nice plantings back there. We are proposing to create three parking spaces at the rear off the alley. Just for some convenience that there's not, not no parking. The, when we came to you last time, we were under the impression that the city was looking for 42 parking spaces for these units because they're new units, but the zoning staff determined that no, their interpretation of the ordinance is that we only need 21 spaces. So when we first came to you, we were showing reverse angle parking on 115th Street. The board asked us to look into what is the parking demand in that neighborhood and is the reverse angle parking really required? We did have Chaz into a study, which you have access to. The conclusion of the study was that there is ample parking in the neighborhood and that the reverse angle parking would not be required to meet the demand. And. Let's see, losing my train of thought. So you've got the study and we're proposing to not do the reverse angle parking. So given the two items, the study and the fact that we are only obligated to provide 21 spaces, it seems like there's plenty of spaces in the neighborhood on-street and off-street. The study also counted up the available off-street parking spaces, which although aren't accessible to our tenants, are available to the neighboring tenants. We do realize that one neighbor objected to our proposal last time, but we think that the study shows that there is ample parking, you know, not, not everybody will be able to park right in front of their house all the time. But I think the particular person that was objecting has a reserved handicap space in front of their home. So. Oh, I, let's see. Yep, so I mentioned that he plans to use historic tax credits so that ensures that's going to be a high level of quality in the, in the work and preserving any historic features of the building. We've submitted the stormwater report and it's with the engineers that the city hires to calculate whether or not we have to have, do any mitigating measures for stormwater. We are told by the school district that there is a drywall system on the property. We have plans for the drywall there and that stormwater was meant to run to the drywall. We've added that to the plan. That's all I can think of. Larry, is there anything you'd like to add?
I mean, I believe you covered it. I, I, oh, I'm Larry Toon, the applicant with WPNT Construction. And I believe the only thing you may have missed is that there was, the variance was approved to go with the three parking spots.
Right, correct. That's right. That's a good, good one. Right, so the, the additional parking spaces are not required by the zoning ordinance. We were initially offering those, thinking it was needed when we thought there was 42 spaces required. For, it's not required. We have the study. We have zoning approval for the parking as currently proposed. So we're looking for approval of the site plan as it is shown here. Without the reverse angle parking, because you may have another plan. I did send two plans, the old plan and the new plan without the reverse angle parking. So we were proposing to not provide that.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I would like to ask if there's anybody from the public that would like to comment on this proposal tonight. All right, I do not hear anyone, so I will ask the board members, you have questions or comments for the applicant.
This is Sarah. I have one very small question to ask Lisa that back at the three parking spaces, there is, there's an existing concrete sidewalk. There is grass between that sidewalk and the building. And then there is a, there's a section of, of ground that has angled hatch on it. And I, my question is, is that asphalt or is that concrete?
It's, it could be either one. It is meant to be a walkway to the alley or for the people parking to get to that, to the walkway. So.
Okay.
It could be either one. It's certainly adjacent to an asphalt area and that's easy enough, but it's also adjacent to concrete. So.
I think it's slightly awkward because the, the third parking space is sort of, the corner of it is landing in the middle of where the concrete walkway is, so. It's my opinion that if it's concrete, it, it signals that it's walkway space and not a parking spot. I guess my concern is if it's, if it's asphalt, somebody will park there.
Yeah, so we'll make it concrete then, if you think that would change the confusion. There is, it does butt up to the existing concrete walkway and we were proposing to pour some concrete next to that to expand that landing area outside of the door. So that's a small thing to make that walkway concrete.
Yeah, I would recommend that. Thank you. That's really all I have.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board?
This is Barbara. I just want to say I was very pleased with the parking study and the perimeter of it and the whole thing. I thought that really helped.
Okay, so this is an unlisted action. Andy, did we already declare ourselves lead agency at the last meeting or do we need to do that tonight?
Um, it's, it's been involved in uncoordinated review. The GBA in order to act to their own secret analysis, so you would have the ability tonight to do your own secret analysis. You don't necessarily have to declare lead. You would just have to, you know, consider a negative declaration. It's an unlisted action.
Okay, great. So is there a motion with respect to seeker for this unlisted action?
This is Anthony. I move that we declare ourselves lead agency.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second, Suzanne.
All right, going to our vote, Barbara Higbee.
Yes.
Suzanne Spellin.
Yes.
Sarah Wanger.
Yes.
Anthony Moeen.
Yes.
Deirdre Rudolph, yes, 5-0. So now our second seeker is our determination. Is there a motion with respect to our seeker determination?
This is Sarah. I make a motion.
Okay. Sounds like Barb, are you seconding?
Yes.
Perfect. Going to our vote, Sarah Wanger.
Yes.
Barbara Higbee.
Yes.
Anthony Moeen.
Yes.
Suzanne Spellin.
Yes.
Deirdre Rudolph, yes. Motion carries 5-0, approved. All right, for our site plan approval, is there a motion?
This is Sarah. I make a motion that we approve the site plan with the one contingency that the area, the undefined area be defined as casted place concrete walkway adjacent to the third parking spot in the back.
Okay, is there a second?
This is Barb, I second.
All right, going to our vote, Suzanne Spellin.
Yes.
Sarah Wanger.
Yes.
Anthony Moeen.
Yes.
Barbara Higbee.
Yes.
Deirdre Rudolph, yes, most, or approval 5-0. All right, thank you.
Big time.
Our next old business.
Thank you.
PLPC 2020 0036 Cemetery Road and Borradale Drive. Lot line adjustment, site plan review and seeker determination. Keystone Homes is proposing to construct 96 apartment units, three buildings in a planned development zone. I would ask, is the applicant and/or the applicant's representative here with us tonight? If so, please introduce yourself.
Yes, Madam Chairman, this is Nick Costa from Advanced Engineering and we are here on behalf of the applicant Keystone Homes Incorporated.
Okay, great. Could you provide us with an update of where you are?
Sure. So we were here about a month ago and we made a presentation to the board with regards to the history of the site and also the current proposal that, that has been, that's in front of you. And there's been a couple of modifications that were made for, you know, over the, over the years on this parcel. It started out as being approved for a city street, Borradale Drive that would have 19 residential lots. And then back in 2017, the board approved a, an apartment development with six different buildings and, and one private road. And currently, there is the, the current proposal with three, three buildings, three four-story buildings that would contain the, the apartments and all the infrastructure that's necessary to serve the, the, these new homes or new apartments with municipal sanitary sewer and water are located on the site. The site does have a dedicated location to do the stormwater management in accordance to the current New York State DEC requirements, along with the City of Troy requirements. And it's still, it still proposes the one road that's very similar to the original Borradale Drive with the exception that the roadway is not, is not a public road. It's going to be a private street. And there are parking spaces to, to accommodate the, the future residents of the, of the buildings that are proposed along that, that drive. There, there will be a retaining wall, a small retaining wall that will be built at the rear between the, the properties, the current, the existing properties on the west side of the, of the, of the, of the new apartment buildings. But that, that wall is substantially smaller in length and in height than what was proposed with the sixth building proposal. We did have meetings with the adjacent neighbors and I believe in the file, there's record of those meeting and there are concurrence that the current plan is acceptable to, to our neighbors. If there are any questions, I'd be more than happy to try to answer them. And if there's any one that wants to see any of the drawings, I also have those with me. If Erin allows me to share the draw, my screen, I could put those up. But I'd be happy to try to answer some of the questions.
Thank you. So I would ask, is there anyone here from the public tonight that would like to comment regarding this proposal? I don't hear anyone. Eric, could you update us on? Somebody, start, is somebody trying to talk? I'm sorry, I can't.
I think it was just some feedback.
Okay, Erin, could you update us on, you know, where this is in terms of zoning review, city staff review, our outside consultant review?
Yes, can you, can you hear me? Just want to.
Yes, I can. Yeah.
The, the applicant has provided a report or actually, Nick, have you provided the report or you just coordinated with Chris's office at DPU? Oh, you're muted.
Sorry about that. We've previously provided a report. We can update, you know, we, we need to update the report because I also want to make a correction on the proposal. It is 90, 90 units, not 96. It's three buildings with 30, 30 units per building, so it's 90 units. So to answer to your question, Erin, we would need to update that letter report that we've previously provided to 90 units instead of 96 units.
Okay, so it's a reduction in units from what was.
That's, that's correct, yes.
So aside from that, we did get comments back on the, from, from our third-party reviewer and they were relatively minor in nature. I think that the board could certainly make them addressing that letter a stipulation of a, of an approval this evening or some action this evening. Aside from that, that's, that's really.
All right, so what about, can you, has this gone to zoning?
I don't, I, I believe that we just need a one single variance for, for parking and it has not gone to zoning yet for that. It's on the agenda, I believe, in, in May.
Okay, so it needs to, because I, it needs to go to zoning for the parking. So is there a reason why we would, the planning board would approve it before the zoning board looks at it, since it is such a reduction in parking?
DeeDee, it's Andy. You would have the ability to consider an approval, would of course have to be conditioned upon any variances being obtained by the zoning board of appeals. Following that path saves the applicant a return visit to, to your board after the ZBA. So you do have that ability. Conversely, you could hold off on action, table the matter and wait to see what the ZBA comes back with. It's completely up to the board. It could be done either way. I would also like to take this opportunity to ask Nick, in your revised environmental assessment form, you may have heard me speaking with Roger Keating earlier, we're having some struggles with the environmental resource mapper and the automated answers in, in some sections of the city. You had submitted a revised EAF and you had checked no to question 12B. I just wanted to confirm that you also will be checking no to question 12A, correct?
That's correct, Andy. You're absolutely correct about that. We, we will update that to be, you know, corrected to the, the no response. you know, corrected to the, the no response.
Okay, thank you. And that, just so the board members know, that would make this an unlisted action.
Right. Okay, do any board members have any questions or comments regarding this proposal and how we want to proceed tonight?
I do, this is Sarah. I have, my, my reaction to this site plan is that the buildings are very strategically located on the site, as is the parking, so as not to wipe out all of the trees on the property. And however, I don't see a planting or landscape plan of any kind, doesn't mean it's there, I haven't seen it. And so I'd only be assuming that you're saving the trees. So I'd like to know that you're saving the trees on both, both the girly side and the neighbor side of the property. And, you know, that, that's step one, that's the most important thing to me. But I would also like to see what landscaping interventions you're proposing as well.
So we, we would follow a similar planting plan that we had done previously for the ninety-six apartments. You know, that plan had substantial more planting than what we would be doing at this time, because like you said, this would, this would reduce the amount of, of clearing that occurs. And also, it has substantially reduced the amount of retaining wall. I think that if we look back at the proposal from, for the ninety-six units, for the ninety-six apartments, there was a retaining wall, not only on the west side, but there was also a retaining wall on the easterly side of the, of the, of the plan, of the site. So the, the planting, there will be a substantial amount of planting that will be done along cemetery and also along the, the cleared and graded areas. But obviously, the areas that are remaining undisturbed would, would be kept with the, with the existing vegetation that's there.
So I think my concern, that's reassuring, Nick, but the plans don't tell me that. And so even though the, the grading plan shows me what remains the same, it doesn't convince me that you're not going to take trees down for construction purposes. So I think the, I think the bottom line is, I would like to see a landscaping plan.
Okay. And, and we can, we could, we certainly can update the landscaping plan to be reflective of the, of the current grading that.
Yeah, I, I don't think we can rely on what was previously submitted.
It's fair.
Dee, this is Barb. I think this project is well received in the neighborhood, because it's going to deal with some drainage issues and various things. But I, I think it's just in light of what Sarah just brought up, I think it would be best if we do whatever we do today, but not approve it, so that it does go to zoning and then comes back to us, so that everything's just in order. But it's, it's not like a major issue or something, but, because I have heard from people that it does solve some problems, and there's not opposition. So if, if somebody could make the motion to, to do that, that would be helpful. Like Sarah.
I'm just waiting for our other commissioners.
Are there any other comments? So again, and then I guess if you could, in the meantime, it sounds like, it sounds like the board is, is suggesting that you do come back next month, and that they do see the, the landscape plan. I assume you'll also be resubmitting to the city's consultant G P I to answer the, the, whatever, ten question, ten comments that they have raised in their letter to just, if we could get a copy of your response to that, that would be great as well.
Okay. Is there any way that you connect on secret determination, or is that, you, you want to wait until we come back?
Does the board have any suggestion regarding that? Would you like to do that tonight, or? Or when?
This is Sarah. It, it seems to me that parking really is part of the secret process.
Okay.
I, I would like to move it along, but I think if we're to kind of follow the, the regular course of action, we should wait.
Okay. All right, well, I'll see you next month then. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
So this is Anthony, I moved to table this to next month's agenda, I believe. We have a date for that, correct? Aaron?
It's in May. I don't, I don't know. I think it might be May nineteenth, I'm not sure.
I'm looking at a calendar right now, one second.
There you go.
It looks like it's the nineteenth, May nineteenth, so that way there won't need to be an additional notice many times.
Okay, great. Thank you, Anthony. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
All right, going to our vote, Anthony Mowen?
Yes.
Suzanne Spellin?
Yes.
Sarah Wanger?
Yes.
Barbara Higbee?
Yes.
And Yurda Rudolph, yes, motion carries five zero to table the application to the next meeting. All right, thank you all. We're moving on to PLPC twenty twenty zero zero six three. Location is thirty-seven one hundred and twenty-fifth Street and two Northern Drive. This is for a subdivision, site plan review and secret determination. Old Daily Custom Catering is proposing a lot line adjustment in addition to an existing structure. The existing and proposed use is a catering business. I would ask, is the applicant's representative here tonight and the applicant?
We actually asked that that project be tabled. This is Elizabeth Rodriguez again from TAP. And the client is considering not going forward with the project, so please take it off the agenda for this evening.
Okay. So we are.
Dee, this is Barb. I was, I was concerned when I saw that it wasn't going to be on the agenda, and I did not know that the applicant asked for it to be removed. But I, I just wanted to comment that I thought that the staff did a good job last month, bringing up all the issues and safety and this and that, and, and they did a good job. But in the end, this is an existing business, it's been there for a very long time. And I was satisfied with the answers that the applicant gave. So I think the fact that there's not some solutions that make it better, that just may be the case. So I just wanted to say that I, I appreciate both sides. I'm glad the staff raised the issues, but I also in the end felt that it's, this is the way it is, and the various suggestions just don't work. So I would hope that, that there could be some discussions, so that the applicant would be encouraged and also realize, I mean, if it's, maybe other people feel that some kind of something has to be done to make that more pedestrian friendly, but, but I just think with the one-way street there and everything, it just doesn't work. There's, there's nothing more you can do. I mean, it works the way it is, and I'm not sure there's anything else that can, can be helpful. So that's just my thought on it. And, but I am glad that you clarified that it was the applicant that took it off, not, not the planning board.
I'll relay your comments to the client and see if she'd like to come back.
Okay, thank you. So I'm now going to move on to the agenda item that was moved from consent to new business. This is PLPC twenty twenty-one zero 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 seven, location is two-three-zero-four fifteenth Street. Site plan review and secret determination. Amonti Pizza is proposing the construction of a six-hundred-square-foot addition and off-street loading area. So I would ask if the applicant is here tonight?
Yes.
I'm also here.
All right, so I will, if you could introduce yourselves, and then I will give you the floor to present your project to us.
Okay, my name is Ed Esposito, I'm assisting Aiman with his review for Amonti Pizza.
Okay, thank you. So if you could, if you could please review your proposal?
Oh, sure, of course. Yes, as any business during COVID, you know, Aiman was discussing the need for cooler expansion, and we had several schemes, in fact, that we reviewed, but the most simplest was out the back with an addition, a trust addition, matching the basement, matching the looks of the building, just running the building out twenty-nine feet, and it's the six-hundred-square-foot that was named in the application. And in addition to that, we do have a proposal for some parking. He, as you know, he does some pizza delivery in the areas, and to get these smaller vehicles and deliveries, we thought it would be great to be able to back into an area, unload off the street, just to free up what he can. So we did work with Aaron on this new loading zone. It's a twenty-by-eighteen area. But as you know, between the two existing buildings, the corner market and the current Amonti Pizza, the site is slow, so there is some cutting in. We provided a section that showed, yes, there is a too-high retaining wall system of the, the larger block with the plant at top. And we have certain other smaller features, like relocate this existing white PVC fence to the mid-property, improve the walkway and networks, renovate the existing garage that needs a new header, so he can get two parking in there. And more specifically, in the front, we are creating a new access with a new pressure-treated deck and door system to his front apartment to the second level, and also to the rear to, to the second level. So there would be a Bilco door. So all these things were highlighted and hatched on the plans. I think they're best seen on the sediment erosion control, which just blackens in everything, and the existing site is in a ghost. But we didn't see too much of a problem, other than with the new addition, it is all lawn, but we did add a dry well specifically for the, the gutters and downspouts and the sump pump of the new addition to connect to at the rear of the property. And also in the front, currently, the drainage goes down the grassy hill and washes out onto the existing sidewalk. We thought it would be a good idea at the base of that retaining wall, that, that, that side section that we provided. We do show a new dry well, a trench drain across, across the driveway limit of the new loading area. And we do drop the granite curbs and put in a panel of sidewalks. There was also an old timber planting bed that's coming out, and then we're replacing that with new buffer perimeter plantings around this new loading zone. It should look like a much improved scene. Right now, it's just worried off with a fence, you can't see in there, there, there's no usefulness to that property. So all in all, this satisfies the owner's request for this Amonti Pizza. It's a cooler expansion, which means he's running out of space. It's not for seating, it's not for restaurant. He's going to have new, the electrical brought in and freezers put in, and there'd just be a set of stairs. The, the access, in fact, would be from a new door at the outside, Bilco door for deliveries to anything, frozen foods in the basement. The two existing basement slash windows would be converted into pass-throughs at the basement level. And the, there's a set of stairs internally that we would be reviewing with building department. That, but that's the, the proposal in a nutshell. His dumpsters exist, the white vinyl fencing all exists in the back. He's going to put the gates on that area, as, as the enclosure was never complete. But his day-to-day operations of taking the trash to the dumpsters and having loading from the, you know, both the front and the back area would be much improved. There's always been nine existing, well, seven existing on-street parking, plus the two in the garage and the new loading zone. So that's the essence of the application.
Okay, thank you. I would ask, is there anyone here tonight from the public that would like to comment on this proposal tonight?
I would. Elizabeth Rodriguez, nineteen eighty-six, fifteenth Street.
Yes.
My, my real concern is adding a curb cut to fifteenth Street. I was dismayed to see this on the because I think that's a terrible idea to add a curb cut to fifteenth Street, it's a pretty busy street. He says that cars are going to back into the parking spaces. I don't believe it. I think they're going to front into the parking spaces and back out into traffic. There's no way to, it's not a parking lot, so there's no way to go in and turn around and come back out facing forward. Perhaps signs could be put up saying that they've got the parking in front of the building. Maybe there's signs there already to that effect. But if not, that's what I suggest. I, I do not think there should be a curb cut there. And I would say, I would be happy if you would get the dumpsters away from the street. So that's definitely a plus. I've heard of complaints having to do with their garbage. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to comment on this proposal tonight?
This is Ed again, I can respond.
Sure.
All right, thank you, Elizabeth. The, the loading zone, as, if, if you live there, you see, Aiman's got two drivers, two smaller vehicles for pizza delivery. There will be signs posted, in fact, there's two signs, and we're considering a third. No public parking, Amonti Pizza loading zone, and restricted to that effect. The drivers get it, that, they just need to back in and pull out. There, it's, it is near a light, but there's two car lanes to that light. We feel there's sufficient gaps in traffic, no one's going to ever back out into traffic there. Delivery, the delivery guys know what they're doing there. This is, this is something, a request born of the owner and the staff and the delivery people to free up fifteenth Street through the essentially more area for people to pull in for, for their own personal pickup and food use, because the, the drivers need to pull off and back into those spaces before they get load another pizza delivery. I assure you that no one's pulling directly in. They're going to be well-advised, will have up to three signs. I could, we submitted them on our S D two, but we'd be glad to go over those with you. There, there is going to be signage restricting that, it's not public where, someone may say, hey, I could just pull in and park and get my pizza. It's not that particular. Regarding the dumpster, it's, it's a very high newer enclosure. I know after the gates are up, I'm not sure what complaints were generated. I know the owner of the corner market works and is, in, in fact, in a tandem owner with, with Aiman, there's been no complaints there, but they do have this dumpster. It has a new concrete pad. We're going through the whole updating the concrete and asphalt walk system with the fencing, the gates, it will be new. If there's any policing, I'm sure, you know, Aiman is very motivated and a good, a good guy to work with you if, if there are any specific comments about the day-to-day operations. But I know it's a pride in the neighborhood, it's got great But I know it's a pride in the neighborhood. It's got great food. Right now, you know, he was, he took a hit during COVID. He, he's telling me he needs some loading area and this works for him. Besides the internal cooling and storage that would help him also. But it is going to be a regulated signage area in the front. We did speak with city engineer Aaron about this. There will be at no point any pulling in and backing out into traffic. We, we can assure you that. The only people parking there are going to be informed of how to park there, if any, or how to load in that zone. It's a loading zone only, no parking.
Okay, thank you. I would, I should have asked Aaron to begin with. I forgot. But I'll ask now, Aaron, are there any staff review comments that you'd like to share with the board?
Yeah, I mean, I think the board received staff comments from James at planning. James isn't on the, the meeting this evening. So I don't know if the board had any questions about the comments that they were provided.
This is Barb. Aaron, I thought that again, James raised some very good questions about this. And unlike the previous project that has very little pedestrian going by there, this one does. So I think that Lisa's comments are very well put. So I'm, I'm just not sure how to, how to sort it out. I do think that the extra storage is a great idea, but I just don't know what to think about this parking situation, this parking access on, right on 15th. Is there anything else you could say about James's comments or anybody's staff comments?
I, well, I, I mean, James, I let James comments speak for, for themselves. The, the, the fact is there's a curb cut opposite this curb cut on 15th. It's, if, if this curb cut does not see a lot of traffic, I'm, I, I, I'm not, I'm not too concerned about it. My biggest concern is that it would turn into parking for customers and parking for people who are unfamiliar with backing into, into that area. But if, if truly it is just being used as an off-street loading zone, I, I, I don't, I don't, I don't have any issue with it.
This is Barb again.
Again, already across this, again, if you go on, just, just to the other side of the intersection, there's an auto body place. He, he's constantly going back and forth over that sidewalk all day, right? And, and, and that's him and his staff and customer. And so I, it just isn't, it's not, to me, it's a, it's a similar enough use to what's already going on in the area. And I, I, I don't have a problem if it's people familiar with the establishment.
Right. This is Barb again. The, the, I guess the only concern I have is I think this is a very good current owner, but we'll be approving it for the future. So I, I just have reservations. As I say, I can't even sort it out right now. Thank you.
Aaron, it's Andy Brick. I just had a quick question. Has the applicant been provided with the planning department's comments?
I understand the question. When Aaron had posed the, the group email and there were specific comments regarding the concern of backing out into traffic. We did respond. It's a, it's a loading zone. There's virtually no public parking signs, a Monty Pizza loading zone only signs. The staff is well versed on backing in and they have two very small, like Amin could speak to what they are. They look like Chevy Volt kind of cars or just little scuttlebutt to deliver the pizza. But they load up. That takes the parking off the street. That frees up the area considerably. Now, when he has these smaller delivery trucks, they get it. Currently they just park in front of the store. And oftentimes, as many people do along that corridor, they, they have their four ways on, they're in the, they're in the street. And now this gives them provision. These guys, he runs a tight ship. These staff can back people in. They need it if there's four ways and get the deliveries done in one shot. Backing in, pulling out conservative, like conservatively as anyone does in the driveway. There's no destruction to the current pedestrian way. It will be improved. There's new concrete panels being installed. I think it's, we'll improve that area visually. And that's the application. I think it works, but.
Look, let me, let me again ask my.
Andy, the answer to your question is no. He was not provided with James Raff's comments from the planning department.
Okay. And therein lies my concern. The board members have been provided a copy of planning staff comments that we're now currently discussing. But the applicant, if they haven't had an opportunity to review those comments, then they're not in a fair position to respond. So it's somewhat unfair for, for the board to be discussing the staff comments without providing them to the applicant and giving them an opportunity to respond. That, that's why I asked the question.
I see.
Okay. So it sounds like that, Aaron, if you could provide these staff comments to the applicant, then perhaps we could reconvene at our next meeting and they would be prepared to discuss the response to them. Do any other members have, have comments or concerns or questions this evening?
PD, this is, I just like.
Go ahead, Sarah.
Sorry Suzanne, I do it every time. Um, I just, I'm going to take the opportunity since, since Amin's got to come back in a month to point out that this proposal is rather, I mean, it's pretty, it's significant. And if you would consider any improvements to the building façades adjacent to your proposal and incorporating those that you see as appropriate, that would be appreciated.
Excuse me, can I get a comment?
All right, let me just keep getting, are there any other board comments?
Yeah, I just had one question. The new addition, if I'm reading the plan correctly, there's a five-foot gap between the property line and the back of the new addition. Is that correct?
Okay.
I'm, I'm just wondering, I mean, I'm thinking about, I apologize, an advanced New York City code because that's what I'm slightly familiar with. And I'm just wondering if here in Troy, if that is enough distance between a property line and the back of a building. I do not know the answer to that question.
We, we have, we have zero foot setbacks.
Okay, thank you.
It's currently two feet. We're proposing five feet.
Okay, just wondering what was legal.
Like our drainage there.
Okay.
Okay. Are there any other comments, questions or concerns to raise regarding this proposal?
Well, this is the owner, Amin Kahlil. Can I? Can I comment on it?
Yes, very quickly, please.
Okay, well, so what's the main issue? I mean, it's, it's, we, we don't have any, this is not like to add additional for seating for customer. It's only going to be for our loading area. And I mean, even my, even before anything, we used to only have three tables. And they only like, we have only six chairs. And since the pandemic in the past year till now, that we only have takeout and delivery only. So I'm promising everybody that we are not having any more additional parking for any customers. And we try, I thought by providing off-street landing, that will help 15th Street area. So I don't see why I should be tabled. And it's very simple. It's only 600 square foot and we're only going to use it for walk-in cooler and freezer and storage. So, I mean, we, we, we've been applied for it back in March. And see with the COVID, everything's getting taken time. So we tried to do as soon as possible, everything moving forward. And I can, I, I only can promise you guys, and you will hear it hopefully by next month, especially Elizabeth, would she comment? I own a couple of houses next to her, 1990, 15th Street. It's my property. And we improve anything we own. I own multiple businesses. And in the next month, and mark my word, we will remove all our staff. We, we are in process by a new business and that will save a lot of parking either. And anything we touch, we improve it for the city. And I don't know, to be honest, why just like being delayed, delayed, delayed for no reason. We work very hard for the city. We work very hard for the first line people. We've been worked side by side for everybody and we have really good, I mean, I don't know, to be honest, what's the issue that people just jump in saying stuff that doesn't make sense. To me, we tried to help to remove off-street parking for landing because there is five businesses around us and it's, all of them get delivery twice a week. And we, by, by us try to do something plus to the street, that shouldn't make me wait for another month.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. We, no, we appreciate your comments. Does any member of the board have a motion? Okay, I will make a motion. I feel, given the fact that we have staff comments that raise concerns, I feel compelled, although I don't want to, I feel compelled to make a motion to table the proposal for one month.
And if I could just add to that, it's not just raising concerns. The memo that you have that the applicant that has not had the benefit to review specifically states that it's the recommendation of the planning staff that this application be denied. I, I, I think it's fundamentally unfair for you to consider action on this application with a recommendation such as that in front of you, but not in front of the applicant. So he's in a position where he can respond to all the points raised in that memo. I, I'm not trying to delay a project. I, I think it's in this board's best interest as well as the applicant's best interest for this to be tabled so that they can receive a copy of that memo and then they will be in a position to respond accordingly at, at next month's meeting. That's, that's why I recommended that it be tabled.
This is Barb. I second the motion.
Okay, there is a second going to vote. Barbara Higbee?
Yes.
Anthony Mowen?
Yes.
Suzanne Spellen?
Yes.
Sarah Wanger?
Yes.
Yuridah Rudolph? Yes, motion carries 5-0. All right. So we will see you next month. We are moving on to the very last item on our agenda. PLPC 2021 0010, Winter Garden. Site plan review and seeker determination type one. David Bryce is proposing the demolition of approximately 85% of the Uncle Sam Mall and the construction of a parking garage, commercial slash retail slash office spaces, approximately 60 apartments, an outdoor plaza and the restoration of the Frere Building with new internal connection to the Winter Garden. So I would ask, is the applicant and/or the applicant's representative here tonight? And if so, please introduce yourself and I'll give you the.
Sorry, Barb, you can start.
Oh, Brian?
Yes.
So I was going to say a word first?
Absolutely. Floor is yours.
Okay. Wait, I'm sorry. I need to move, I need to turn up my audio. There we go. Okay. There we go. I'm sorry. Um, just quickly, I'm Barb Nelson. I'm with TAP. I'm sorry, I still can't hear my audio. Lisa, can you turn yours off? I don't understand. Okay. Hi, I'm Barb Nelson. I'm with TAP and I'm going to just introduce the project and then turn it over to Brian. About a year ago, we presented this, this project in a very different format to you. It was essentially a one-story addition to the historic structure of the atrium and the Frere Building. We received preliminary approval and the, the project was 100% commercial and retail space. And our next step was to move forward with SHPO and HRC. A lot has happened in the last year. I don't have to tell anybody that. As David took his, Bryce Companies took their conceptual approval to, to the, to their financiers and their architects. The reaction as COVID impacts became more and more tragically apparent. It, it became clear that the banks were not interested in commercial office rental space or retail spaces. Instead, they were suggesting residential and that, that in fact, the residential demand in small cities like Troy, we've all seen a very strong demand. And so it makes a lot of sense that the banks were more interested in residential. And in fact, it's the center of downtown and it's a prime location for residential apartments for, for very nice ones. And the demand for, for small city living and, and apartments where, where one could actually even work from home. These, these demands became very apparent. So David Bryce began to consider a, a really major demolition and reconstruction of the block. This presented its own problems. It required purchase of city lands, actually four different small plots of, of city land. It's not real common knowledge to the public that the, the atrium itself is owned by the city. So he started that process and it became very cumbersome. It requires some very complicated bureaucratic procedures. You know, council resolutions and state senate resolutions in order to alienate public lands. So what you see tonight, what Brian is going to present to you is a, a very much a hybrid proposal. It preserves pretty much the signature components of the atrium. It requires no transfer of lands from the city of Troy. And we're hoping that we will see, you know, some good questions that we can respond to, some good input and feedback and hopefully a preliminary concept approval so that we can move forward. Talking to SHPO and to the Historic Review Commission to continue to get that feedback. So with that, David, if that sounds good, I will turn it over to Brian, who's going to present to you all the, the complex, he's going to simplify the, the many components of this project for us.
Thanks so much, Barb. Aaron, is it possible that you can allow me to share my screen?
Give it a shot. If it doesn't work, I'll try to tweak it some.
Sure. I think you just have to enable participant screen sharing. Oh, there we go. Can everyone see that?
No.
Give it a second maybe. And it should come up. Hopefully.
Looks good.
Okay, you can see it. Okay, great. Thank you very much, Barb. I appreciate the introduction. My name is Brian Osterhout. I'm with Environmental Design Partnership. Uh, my name is Brian Osterhout. Uh, I'm with Environmental Design Partnership. Uh, I'm a civil environmental engineer. Representing the applicant, um, David Bryce and the Bryce Companies, um, who, as Barb mentioned, has been working on this project for quite some time. Uh, the project team uh, has expanded recently with the expansion of the project. So it includes the Environmental Design Partnership, uh, the firm that I work with on the site civil survey side. Uh, Hyman Hayes Associates on the architecture side and Troy Architecture Practice Tap. Uh, also on the architecture, planning and historic preservation nature of this project. Uh, just a general property overview, if everyone can see this. So this is, as Barb mentioned, kind of a complex project because uh, it, it has a lot of different building components to it. Um, but essentially, uh, and I'm sure a lot of people are familiar with this location. It's, it's, it's very centralized in, in the downtown core. Um, but if you can see my cursor here over this uh, blue faded square, um, that is the fairer building, which is uh, you know, a historic building and it has absolutely stunning architecture. We have, um, and then what is referred to as the Uncle Sam Mall, uh, the atrium uh, comprising the eastern and then southern portion of the property. As uh, Barbara had mentioned, um, what makes this project even more complex is that um, Bryce Companies doesn't actually own the entire um, building, say corner to corner. So uh, in, in between the fairer building up here, and you can see it in red on, on this slide, is a slice of the atrium uh, in the exterior sidewalks uh, in landscaping that is actually owned by the city of Troy. There's a couple other small sidewalk pieces that are owned by the city of Troy as well, uh, adjacent to the buildings. But um, for the discussion tonight, it's kind of easy just to, to separate this out because um, that's what's uh, held the project up to date. And, and so David was trying to work with acquiring that piece. And as Bard mentioned, uh, you know, it, it's a very complicated project, process to go through that. And so um, the project was re-envisioned with keeping that space owned by the city of Troy. And so generally then what we're left with is uh, the fairer building here in the blue. Um, and then portions of uh, the, the mall and the atrium on the northeast corner here, and then on the southern half of the property here. And so what I thought I, I would do, because um, you know, this, this is a complex project with many floors and, and you know, and many um, in different components to it, is, is just kind of go through each of those little project segments to try to, you know, build the storybook, so to speak. And so um, you know, the proposed redevelopment of the fairer building, as I mentioned, this is a nationally listed um, building. Uh, the historic facade remains intact. Um, and there will be some interior changes that um, go back to its original architecture. And so one of the things is there's a gigantic skylight that's, that's very center to the building. Um, that is going to be um, rehabilitated and improved so that the skylight and, and the natural light actually goes all, all the way through the core of the building down to the first floor. And um, the grand staircase that goes up as well will be uh, visible then from the street level as well. Obviously, we have to bring this up to current code standards. So uh, new ADA accessible entrances will, will, will be um, constructed as part of this project for that. But, but you know, it, it's going to reactivate the, you know, the, the retail component on the street level. Um, which is, you know, what this building was originally intended for. The northeast corner of the project, which is uh, shadowed here in blue, um, just again, adjacent to the fairer building right here. So this is going to become a plus or minus four hundred uh, parking space garage. Um, as I think everyone's aware, um, you know, there are some needed upgrades or, or um, changes to the Uncle Sam garage here. Building this new six-story four hundred car parking garage is intended to bring um, all of that parking onto this site and allow for hopefully the future redevelopment of, of, of this parcel as well uh, in the not too distant future. So um, on the ground level, this is a retail component. Um, and CVS has committed to this location. And above them will be um, again, uh, five stories of parking garage uh, with uh, access off of the fourth street here, as you can follow my cursor coming in. And then this is the retail, again, street level, kind of back to its original core um, interest. And so as I mentioned, this corner here, and you can kind of see some renderings and, and those were included in the packet. But um, you know, uh, the, the applicant is an architect himself and has been working diligently on this for years. So he's, he's done some unbelievable renderings of, of what this can include. And as you can see, we maintain on the right-hand side of this page, obviously, the historic facade of the fairer building. And then we blend that into a, um, you know, a nice complementing um, uh, modern parking structure that, you know, certainly um, has more interest than the, you know, the current two-story brick facade. That's, 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 that's there now with glass. So um, going down a little bit farther here, this is the fourth street elevation, uh, looking east. And again, um, you know, looking at the parking garage from, from fourth street, and you can see here's the parking structure. Here's the, you know, the portion of the atrium that is, you know, owned by the city and, and is to be maintained. And then, you know, integrated into what I'll show you in another slide or two, which becomes kind of the south half of this redevelopment. Um, south of, of the existing atrium glass. So the southern half of, of Broadway now, so, so we're just south of, of the parcel that's owned by the city of Troy. So this half of the development is um, a true mixed use. It's got commercial, it's got office, retail, uh, residential above it. It's um, you know, it, it's also got a kind of a new idea. We're actually taking this corner. So, so this is existing building right now. Um, this is intended to become uh, an outdoor engagement area for, you know, a proposed restaurant with outdoor seating. Um, you know, different festivities, um, really a nice enhanced public space. Uh, we're currently working on what that'll look like and um, with our landscape architects. But um, this is really intended to, you know, engage the public and engage the uses here at this, at, at the street level. Um, right now, there's um, uh, proposal to also have some additional underground parking underneath this uh, area that has been named Quackin, Quackin Bush Square. Um, you know, and again, the central portion of this, which is, you know, the atrium that everyone's very familiar with. This is um, going to be um, the permanent home to the Troy's farmer market. Um, so there's a community kitchen that's involved as, as part of this project. And you know, is, is really intended to give them a future home. With, you know, a, a, a better street level activity and engagement um, layout in, in terms of what David's been working on. Um, again, third floor, this is just kind of going up vertically as we're doing it. Uh, we're talking about um, apartments here, uh, plus or minus sixty residential units uh, above that, that retail and uh, commercial space on, on the lower floor. And then here are some, uh, again, renderings of, of what is envisioned for this area. Um, this is the top elevation is a Broadway elevation. Looking at it um, to the south and uh, the bottom elevation is a elevation looking west from third street. And again, you know, you can kind of see the, the um, you know, the old here in the central corridor, you know, the older um, established look of the atrium with some of the newer uh, components of, of the proposed project. From a site plan perspective, um, you know, this project is um, it, it's owned appropriately. It's, it's, it's owned uh, before. Uh, it, you know, essentially mimics the existing footprints. With the exception, as I mentioned, of Quackin Bush Square i- in this corner of, of the project down here. Um, so it, it doesn't really change much, if anything, from an impervious standpoint. Um, it, you know, slightly less building coverage on the site. But again, you know, it's, it's, it's downtown. B four district. So you know, there, you know, there are no setbacks. Um, you know, it works within the existing footprint. Obviously, the historic facade of the, of the fairer building uh, remains the same. And um, you know, it, this is just really a true mixed-use project and it's, and it's very, or um, definition. Uh, it's really has every project component um, that a mixed-use project couldn't should have. Um, it's um, it, this is located in the historic district. So as, as Barb mentioned, um, you know, we, you know, once, once we um, feel as if uh, this commission uh, likes the overall uh, trajectory of this project and what's presented. You know, we will have to go in front of the Historic District and Landmarks Review Commission um, as both the atrium and the uh, fairer building are listed buildings. And, and so I just kind of wanted to talk about what, at least I perceive to be some of the project benefits. I mean, this is a very large project financially um, for the applicant. Um, a- and you know, this is a, a very large investment in downtown Troy. Uh, it affords a new parking structure, which is sorely needed in this area. Um, allows for the rehabilitation or redevelopment of the parcel that currently serves to, to provide a, a lot of parking in that area. Uh, I like to think you, at least when I look at this from an engineer's perspective, and I'm not an architect, but it blends the new and the old. It's, it's really a restoration of historical features. Um, it, it's the reurbanization of, of the storefronts that were really um, you know, at, at the core of what the downtown area is supposed to be. You know, there was um, you, you know, uh, you know, a movement within the seventies to kind of, of, of bring, bringing those, those mall features in. Um, you know, and, and we've seen over the last decade of, you know, turning those back out to the street level to uh, engage the pedestrians and, and the, and the residents in those areas. But you know, as I mentioned, it also provides for modern amenities, which are sorely needed in this area. It, it brings it up to ADA standards. It, you know, it, it gives a long-lasting lifespan um, to, to this uh, fantastic project. Uh, you know, most importantly, you know, it, it is a true mixed-use project. It, it, it has the commercial, it has the office, it, it's got the retail. It's, it's almost a live-work uh, environment. Um, you, you know, for, for people who, who want that. Uh, those types of amenities, it provides a year-round home for the Troy farmer's market with the community kitchen and a- and, and just, you know, I, I have to imagine that, you know, such an investment and, and, and such a, a large-scale development would be a catalyst for additional investment and redevelopment within the downtown core itself. Certainly, uh, the applicant here, as I mentioned, um, you know, wants to get this project moving forward. Um, and then hope, hopefully onto some additional redevelopment. So um, I know you haven't had many presentations tonight, so I hope I didn't put everyone to sleep. But uh, it is a very exciting project and um, you know, we're, we're very pleased to uh, be able to present it tonight and to solicit some of your feedback um, so that we can try to move it forward. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. So I guess I'll ask, is there anyone here from the public tonight that would like to make comment on this proposal? All right. Any feedback, comments, questions from the commissioners?
Dee Dee, this is Sarah. I'll say something.
Sarah.
Uh, Brian, thank you. You made it really easy to follow uh, the project. When I looked at the packet that was submitted, I struggled a little bit, but um, your, your narrative really helped a lot. Um, and it makes total sense. Very exciting.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, it's, sorry, it, yeah, it's, it, it's, it's a complicated building with a lot of different pieces to it. So I just tried to break it up as kind of a storyboard so that people could understand it, but thank you.
Yep, it worked.
Yeah, I agree. I think the presentation was, was very good. Definitely answered some questions I had. Any other members of the board have any questions or comments?
Um, I agree as well. It's, it is a wonderfully exciting project. And um, my only hope is there are a lot of interesting ways of hiding the fact that one has a parking garage. And I hope that the final design utilizes some of them so we don't have basically an Uncle Sam's garage tacked onto a gorgeous project. That's my only comment on that. But I think it's a wonderful project.
Thank you.
I, I will say two more things. Um, the first is um, just to let Brian and, and David know, um, I'm sure you already know this. Um, but you should anticipate, once the architectural development is uh, presented, you should anticipate a lot of feedback. Um, so that is just some advice. And the second is actually a question. What, what is proposed for the existing Uncle Sam parking garage as part of this project?
Yeah, so from a seeker perspective, um, it is not part of this project. Um, this project is quite large now, as you can tell. Um, you know, it has a price tag. Uh, probably somewhere in the twenty to thirty million dollar range. Um, so uh, I don't want to speak necessarily for the applicant, but my understanding is, you know, we have to tackle this project first. Um, and then um, you know, I, I, I'm, I'm sure the applicant does um, have kind of a grand vision for, for what's next on that parcel to the north, where the Uncle Sam parking garage currently uh, resides. But um, as part of the seeker action itself and this application, it's not, it, it's, it, it, it's, it's a different project. It's just, um, you know, the, the intent is, you know, you can't do anything with parking um, to the north until this parking structure um, accommodates the parking need in that area. So um, just based on the size of this, I don't anticipate that that's anything that's going to come down the pike from a timing standpoint, right after this, just based on the size alone. It's um, you know, it's a sizable project. So um, it's not necessarily part of this project. But I understand, I mean, I, obviously there is a connection, you know, there's a pedestrian bridge there now. Um, you know, that pedestrian bridge is part of this project. Um, you know, would not serve that property. Um, my, my gut feeling would be that it, it may come back as part of the redevelopment of that parcel to the north at some point. But um, but no, it's, this is intended to be its own functioning development. And, and that's why the parking garage is included.
Okay, I, I, I will make the statement that um, although this is an incredibly exciting project, it is, it is sorely needed and, and I support it. I expect that most people will support the project. Um, this level of investment on this property while not improving or replacing the parking garage property will, will be difficult for some. So that should be noted, understanding that they're different parcels, they're different projects, but that is a reality.
Sure. And I'm, I'm sure at some point the applicant, you know, can and will address that. But um, you know, I, I just again, view it as, you know, we have to walk before we run. So we have to get this done. And then I'm sure, you know, his intention is to tackle that, you know, that, that uh, property uh, conglomerate to the.
Yep, understood. This is just, it's, it's food for thought and a suggestion to David to be prepared with more information next time and not. And not, I don't mean to put you on the spot now, but I think as this moves forward, it's something that will have to be addressed.
If I could, Sarah, I think we all understand that the condition of the existing Uncle Sam Garage is a project that needs to be addressed no matter what happens on this block. So I'm certain that David, you know, is thinking of that, has a plan, as do, you know, has a process that he'll be considering, you know, how to move forward with that, as do, you know, the code officers. You know, everybody's, there's a lot of scrutiny of the parking garage. So, yeah, that is something that has to be thought about. But as Brian says, the parking proposed for this block, south of Fulton Street, is intended to serve this development no matter what happens to the north, whether it is renovated or replaced or whatever happens. We want this block to live and thrive on its own, and so it does include its own parking component.
Understood. Thank you both.
This is Barbara Higbee. I'm very relieved that you've now got a project that is not primarily commercial because as we now know, that we didn't know years ago, the residential is the strength of Troy, the small-city live-work. I'm also thrilled that the parking is in this block, as Barb Nelson just explained. And I assume when you do the parking garage lot, that that will be also a mixed-use with its own internal parking, and it'll work much better than what was done, what, 50 years ago? So I'm very excited by it, look forward to seeing more detail, and I think it's great. And I love the idea that it'll be the year-round Farmer's Market. Thank you.
Okay, great. Any further comments or questions? I guess a question to the applicant, is there anything further you need from us tonight?
Yeah, I mean, to the extent, not to push you, but obviously, if, you know, there's a positive recommendation on the sketch plan approval, it allows us to move, you know, the application forward and to go into, you know, some detailed site plan work. So I think Barb had mentioned that early on, that, you know, if you're so inclined, you know, to move this forward. I mean, we've obviously received positive feedback, which is fantastic. But, you know, I guess I'll ask Andy if, you know, procedurally, that's a formality we need from the board.
Procedurally, no, they wouldn't be able to give you any type of official concept approval this evening. That would be getting out ahead of our skis in terms of the seeker review. This is definitely a type-one action. I'm not sure if you feel, Brian, that you're at the level of detail in your submission now that you feel that the board could declare lead agency under seeker and begin that process this evening? It's up to you. If you would just anticipate it being here for concept, they can do that at a later date. I do think they're the appropriate lead agency. But what you could do is you could seek an informal opinion or informal poll of board members. And I know these board members are real good about giving their honest and direct opinions to applicants. So you'll get a good sense of where it's heading, you know, in an informal basis.
Sure, of course. I appreciate that information. I think that that's a great idea. You know, again, I would anticipate too that they would take lead agency status. You know, that's up to them at this point. I think we do have, you know, the architectures have been fairly well-developed in terms of the space usage. So, you know, that's up to them. I mean, we obviously have to come back anyway. So whether it's tonight or whether it's next month from the lead agency status, I, you know, I don't think that that's, you know, a big deal, but, yeah.
I'll suggest that, if we could get lead agency status, anything formal that can be taken back to the bank, so to speak, you know. Yes, we've got the city to declare lead agency. Yes, we've got a poll on approvals. Anything in the minutes that can be, well, anything that can be formalized will help assure financial agents and tenants who are, you know, ready to sign on the line. Anything we could get, so I would push it a little.
Okay.
I'll push it.
Okay, I'll ask the board members, are you ready to declare lead agency tonight? And if so, is there a motion?
This is Sarah. I make a motion that the City of Troy Planning Commission serve as lead agency for seeker.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, Sarah. We have a motion and a second going to our vote. Barbara Higbee?
Yes.
Anthony Mowen?
Yes.
Suzanne Spellin?
Yes.
Sarah Wanger?
Yes.
And Deirdre Rudolph, yes. And as far as an informal poll, does the board want to entertain that?
How would we do that?
I think we would just...
What I would suggest is rather than some type of vote, just individual board members express any opinion they may want to share with Brian and Barbara this evening to give them some direction on how to move forward from here.
Okay, well, I will state that from what I have seen, that I am in support of this proposal as presented tonight.
I am as well.
This is Barb. I am also in favor of it and glad to see the, as much detail as there is, but we need, of course, a lot more. Thank you.
I certainly am. Thanks again, Brian.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Appreciate all the feedback. Thanks.
Okay, you're welcome. So that is it for our agenda items. Are there any issues that the board would like to raise that's not on the agenda? Before we take a motion to adjourn? All right, there being no items, I would ask, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting tonight?
I move that we adjourn tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Suzanne. Is there a second?
This is Anthony. I second.
Terrific. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All right, motion carries, approved.
Thanks, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.